So, meeting, Ms. Keegan, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Gafredo, will you lead us in a moment of silence or prayer?
Uh, yeah, let's have a moment of silence for everybody having a happy and safe Fourth of July weekend. Good.
Thank you. Ms. Shavniski, will you call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Korpora?
Here.
Mr. Giovanni?
Here.
Mr. Gafredo?
Here.
Mr. Hackman?
Yeah, here.
Ms. Keegan?
Here.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Here.
Mr. Warren? Um, eight present, Mr. Brown by phone.
Thank you. Next, we have courtesy of the floor. I have three people signed up. You have, um, five minutes to speak.
Approval of minutes?
Hmm?
Approval of minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 6th, 2024? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, we have courtesy of the floor. Beverly Hernandez, you're first.
Thank you for giving me your attention. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want to do a point of order. I just want to talk about the way things should be and the way things seem to be. There's actually a hierarchy in the government. You know, it goes from the lowest to the highest. Do you know who's the highest in the government? Anybody? The highest in the government is we, the people. We, the people, are the government. We choose you. We elect you to do our will. It's right here in the Constitution. Do you want to copy? Can I bring this up?
Well, you can wait till you're done because you're taking away your time.
Okay.
So, so we, the people, are in charge, and your job is basically to improve our quality of life, to meet what we deem is important, what really should be happening in the county, among other things, is the budget and the land use and those things, of course, but those all benefit us. So, you're basically like the elders in the gates. You're the people who are the ones who listen to us, think about how things should be done, come together as a group of wise elders, and make decisions. But you really do answer to us. Okay? And I'm wondering, how do you know what we want? Are you doing surveys? Are you asking us? Or is it just the, the, this? You know, the courtesy of the floor? Is that how you get your information as to what we want? I know this may not be interesting to you. It doesn't matter if we're Republicans or we're Democrats. There's independents, there's all kinds of people out here. We, the people, not we, the Democrats, not we, the Republicans, we, the people, want you to do a job to improve our quality of life. I guess the courtesy of the floor is how you're hearing that, maybe letters, maybe people are calling you up. I don't know how it actually works, but, um, I just, one last little thing. I think the three new members, no, you're not so new. He's been here before. But the newer members should really be consulting with the elders who have a lot of experience here, who can teach you how to do things. Now, resolutions are not what we, the people, want. We don't want, we want outcomes, we want results, we want a better life. There's a lot of homeless out here, there's people who can't feed their families, there's a lot of people out here with a lot of needs. I'd really like you personally to address those needs rather than some of the things you've been talking about. So, with that, I wish you a happy holiday. I hope your week goes very well. I hope God blesses you. I hope he can appeal to you and he can open your ears. And thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you. If you want to hand something, you can give it to Jen in the corner. Oh, well, thank you. Next, we have Deb Bureau. And I'm sorry, I was supposed to say, could you please state the town of your residence and your name when you come up? But I said Deb Bureau, I believe, is next. Yeah. I'm sorry, I forgot to say that to Mrs. Hernandez.
Do you want her to speak?
It says on the sheet, you're from Palmer, correct? Thanks for the record.
Hi, my name's Deb Bureau. I live in Upper Nazareth. And I just want to agree with Bev said, you know, there's a lot of homeless, you know, there's a lot of people in need, and we do need to put a lot of focus on that, too. And I just hope that, I don't know what the committee can do, but that would be great if we can take a look at some of the needs that people are really struggling with. You know, you have drug addictions, you have people being shot, um, like Bev said, people can't feed their families. And I think as a community, we need to get together and support people in need. And again, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, happy Independence Day, and God bless and take care. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last name I have is David Hammer, I believe. Did I say that correctly?
I may have signed up on the wrong sheet. I'm from Lehigh.
Okay, then you're going to pass, right? And you're going to talk when it's your turn. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak from courtesy of the floor? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. McClure, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, council. So wonderful to be here on the eve of our 248th birthday. First, on your agenda item tonight, we have the contract that we have resolved with PSSU. It was a hard one, and I would like first to congratulate the folks from PSSU and SEIU, specifically the chief shop steward, Ms. Kezzy Johnson, one of our employees, their state president, Steve Cantonese, their staff representative, Greg Riederling, and Greg Ellis. They drove a hard bargain, and I am appreciative to them for coming to the resolution that we came to on our side. I'd like to thank Mary Lou Cabaly, our Director of Human Resources, who did great work on this contract, as well as our Director of Human Services, Susan Wandelowski, and our outside counsel also was very instrumental in helping get this resolved. And I think it's important that we have our human services workers under contract, and they will be after tonight. Are there any questions about the deal?
Can we do, oh, well, go ahead. I was going to say we can do that when we get.
Sure, that's fine. I'm, yeah, I'm not going. I'm not leaving.
Well, I thought we might, but.
Okay. No, that's good. So, I referenced the eve of our 248th founding birthday, and I think it's important when we talked about at the last election integrity committee meeting, Mr. Warren, and I wish you were here tonight with us to have a dialogue about this, but he brought up, I think, a very serious concern that there was a potential for misuse of the election integrity committee, and he didn't understand the necessity of having another committee beyond the governance committee. And we had a lot of good conversations, Mr. Hackman, and I had good colloquy about it. And Ms. Fargo-Hefner had some important thoughts about it. And I think it, what we concluded from that is, we were all attempting to approach the election integrity committee meetings and the issues before that committee in good faith. I think that's what we came up with. And I would be remiss, though, if I didn't take the concerns that Mr. Warren brought forth and took them seriously. So, what I did was, and this might annoy some people, but since elections are a core county function, I prepared a draft, a resolution for circulation to county council that I would hope you would take up sometime between now and November. It's really very simple, and I'll just go through with it now. Whereas, founded in 2020, Keep Our Republic is a nonpartisan civic education organization dedicated to protecting a republic of laws and strengthening the checks and balances of our democratic electoral system. Whereas, the founders of Keep Our Republic created a compact for public officials and everyday concerned citizens dedicated to protecting the core of democracy, the vote. Whereas, the words of the compact are as follows. We Americans are blessed with a reliable, free, and fair electoral system that works to ensure that the voices of the people are heard. For generations, our elections have been safely and soundly implemented by officials and volunteers at the state, county, and precinct levels. We cherish these civic traditions which have made our country the beacon of democracy around the world. We rededicate ourselves now to uphold the following basic principles, and we call upon our fellow citizens to do the same. Let every eligible voter vote. Let every vote be counted. Let the electoral count stand. Respect the voice of the people in each state as expressed in the popular vote. And then the resolution section is now therefore be it resolved that the county of Northampton affirms and adopts this compact to serve as the guiding principles in the administrations of our elections in 2024 and beyond. And I think that would put to rest any concerns Mr. Warren and the point of view of folks who share his point of view have, and it would be a wonderful expression to all of our citizens about our seriousness and our commitment to the vote. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. McClure?
Okay, I'll be back.
Thank you. Under old business, we, we don't take questions from the floor. Sorry. Under old business, we have consideration of vote on an ordinance entitled, an ordinance by the Northampton County Council, concurring and agreeing with the Borough of Wilson and the Wilson Area School District to participate in a proposed tax increment financing district to be known as 1921 at Dixie Avenue Tax Increment Financing District in accordance with the powers conferred upon municipalities by the Act 113 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as amended. And Mr. Gafredo and Korpora introduced this ordinance at the May 2nd, 2024 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding this ordinance? Is there any discussion from council? Mr. Gafredo?
Is it true that this got tabled by the school board in the township?
I can't speak to what they did, but Ms. Smith has some information.
Good evening, everybody. So, literally just as of a call this afternoon, I want to give you the updated or proposed calendar schedule for the TIF process. As of right now, it looks like the Borough is set to pass their resolution on July the 8th. The school district is going to be deliberating on that same day, with the school district coming to a vote on August the 12th. Therefore.
August 12th?
August 12th. So, therefore, from a county perspective, and Aileen, I need to send you the revised dates because this literally just happened, we're looking at August 13th for our public notice to be advertised, the TIF ordinance introduction on September the 5th, the public hearing on September the 19th, and the final vote on October 17th. That's literally right as of this afternoon, so I will communicate that with you in writing on Friday morning. Yes.
That's your proposal?
Yes. Well.
That you're recommending, that council will decide ultimately.
Yes, but because of the laws of the TIF, we need to have like 30 days in between when the notice comes, and again, I'll communicate all of that, but ideally, that's the proposed timeline.
All right, that's proposed.
Correct.
We can say, you know what, we're going to have the first will be in October. We don't have to have these dates other than that the township does or what the Borough does at school district, that's great, but we don't have to be right after that. If we want to wait three months, we can wait three months.
Well, that'll reflect the public advertisement in the paper. We have to as a county.
County.
Correct, yes.
All right, that's all I'm saying.
Yes.
I think sometimes it's presumptuous to say to council, this is when you're going to do this. I know I'm a voice in the wilderness on this, but, I mean, you gave your thoughts, and this is what you propose, but that isn't necessarily what council will do. We understand the 30 days and all that, we've done this before, but, I mean, I know people want to move this at rocket speed, but council, I can tell you right now, if you move too fast, I know where this is going to go. So, you may want to give council the opportunity to decide when they want to vote on it, but that's just my opinion. There's eight other people here, so.
What I'm hearing is that we don't need to even consider this until September.
Yes. At this point, provided the Borough and the school district, correct?
Thank you.
Yes.
So, you'll give that to her?
Correct.
And I'll take it as.
Yes. Yep, she'll have it Friday morning.
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
So, noted?
Second.
Second. Motion has been tabled in second, no further discussion, call for the vote. Joe, Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
The sponsors in order.
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Brown, or?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
Mr. Hackman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yeah.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. And so, if, just as, I guess, a point of order, if this changes in its form or whatever, we'll just end up getting a new one, correct? We don't have to pull it off the table, and if it's the same, it'll be pulled off the table as it is.
Yeah, it's going to follow whatever the township and the school district does because this language will change depending how they change it. So, yeah, correct. You're right.
So, moving on, thank you for that. We have new business, consideration of a health, safety, and welfare bond resolution regarding financing and refinancing by the Northampton County General Purpose Authority for certain Lehigh University facilities. Mr. Hackman, will you introduce the resolution, please? Well, you're the finance committee.
All right. You think so? Now, therefore be it resolved by the county council, Northampton, the county of Northampton. One, it is hereby declared to be desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the county, being the area served by the facilities comprising the project to have such facilities financed or refinanced through the authority, and the authority is hereby authorized to finance the project for the benefit of the university. Two, the issuance of the bonds to finance the project and related costs and expenses of the financing is hereby approved, it being understood, however, that such approval does not and shall not directly or indirectly obligate the taxing power of the county or otherwise obligate the county in any way whatsoever, and is given for the sole purpose of complying with applicable provisions of law relating to the financing of the project by the authority. Three, the proper officers of the personnel of the county are hereby authorized and empowered to take all such further actions and execute such additional documents as they may deem appropriate to carry out the purposes of this resolution. And four, all prior resolutions or parts of prior resolutions of the county not in accordance with this resolution are hereby repealed insofar as they conflict here with, that's it?
Thank you. Mr. Hammer's here, he can answer any questions, and we could have a discussion on the project. Do you want to come forward? He's our representative from Lehigh University.
Good evening.
I have a question.
Sure.
I know we've done these in the past. What's the endowment right now stand at at Lehigh?
The endowment's about 1.8 billion.
Billion, billion, yeah.
Billion.
Okay, I was just curious because I know different universities are doing, are at different points, but like I said, we've done this before, just curious.
Gafredo, and then?
You were at the GPA meeting, and we approved this through the GPA. Do you want to just go over like what projects you're going to do?
Sure.
You're going to refinance some older bondage and put it into this one and explain it to the council so they understand?
Sure, sure. The borrowing is for 125 million, 54 million of that is to refinance some previous bond issues, and the other 71 million is for ongoing projects at the university, capital projects, namely, the university center, completion of that, and to replace some chillers on campus are the two primary projects, but there would be other capital projects that would be qualified under tax exempt purposes if needed. So, 71 new money, 54 million to refinance to take advantage of interest rates, lower interest rates.
Did you move the university center, or is it just the same old building? You just redid the whole?
Yeah, it's being, it's under renovation for the past year. It's a $106 million project, and it has been closed for a year. It'll be completed next summer, so it's been under construction, it's been paid for with some university funds and philanthropy and the balance we need for, through this tax exempt financing.
Thank you.
Mr. Gafredo?
Basically, the question I was going to ask. Just wanted to get a good idea of what the project was, the description.
And most of this is on the main part of campus, not the mountaintop?
No, it's all on the main campus, correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comment? Call for the vote.
Mr. Hackman?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration of resolution for ratification of term sheet with PA Social Services Union, PSSU, Local 668 SEIU. Mr. Giovanni, will you introduce?
Whereas, Northampton County Charter, Section 202, dash 12, provides that the county council shall have the power to approve any collective bargaining agreement with officers and employees. Whereas, on June 26th, 2024, county council received a term sheet with amendments to the contract between Northampton County and the Pennsylvania Social Service Union, PSSU, Local 668 SEIU. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the, by Northampton County Council that the attached term sheet shall be approved this third day of July, 2024.
Okay, are there any questions?
Anybody here from the union?
Is there anyone here from the union?
Nope, okay. Oh. Yeah, I thought it was for, I had a question for Ms. Cabaly, if she could. I just, I just need to get something cleared up. I've been asked, and I don't have the answer. So, if we get this straight, people will finally feel like they know, maybe. The things, there's certain amounts of money. All of this will reflect back to their, their base. In other words, excuse me, I, I looked at this, excuse me, and then I read what was on the blog, and somehow they had a lot more information than council got. But the thing is, all, any money, no matter how it's handled, like $500, a step, this, that, that'll all, though, roll into their base pay. So, let's say, year three, whatever people got in year one or year two, no matter how it was applied, will be part of their base for year three.
Yes, the contract that was agreed upon is a 5% COLA for each year of the contract, so yes, it builds each year.
Well, what was the 500 plus, plus $500 or?
That was a previous offer that was made. That was not part of the final.
Okay, so, all right, so this is the new, and so this is, this is what was approved, but it's a new offer.
Correct.
All right, so it's essentially, it is basically what you're saying, a COLA, a COLA, and a COLA. Are we doing any steps?
No, they're, all three years are COLAs.
The terms are right on this sheet.
I'm reading the sheet, Ken.
It doesn't say.
No offense, but she's the director of the department. I get it.
You can labor it as long as you want.
I will be labored. This is about labor, so I'll be labor. Okay, so when the top of the seniarity list is reached, hey, I want at least as much information as a blogger gets.
Can we stay focused?
I am focused. I had the floor.
You have the floor, yes, you do.
All right. I just wanted to be sure because, again, we're not using steps as they were set up originally. In other words, in a classification, I don't, what are we up to now, 16, 17 steps or 15 steps or?
Yeah, PSSU has more.
Yeah.
Steps, and their steps are smaller, so that's why.
So, they'll stay at the same step, they'll just get a COLA. So, whatever step somebody's at now, let's say they're at step C in their classification, they'll get COLAs, but they're not going to move, the step won't change.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm not going to be, you made it clear to me. I just, I'm not going to blame the administration, they're just doing whatever the administration has done since Jerry Safree. We had a very sound way of paying people. You had a, steps within a classification, if you had to satisfy your higher evaluation, you got a step, and then you'd come in and negotiate the COLA. And after Jerry, we decided we'd be like a private company instead of a public government. Every administration has decided we're going to just negotiate everything, and the hell with the classification steps.
Excuse me, order.
So, I just, I just would say that that could possibly be one of the problems we're having when it comes to bringing staff in and retaining them. People knew that if you came in, if you did well, you'd get this step. You may or might not get a COLA, 1%, 2%, 3%, but, you know, it was very employee-focused. We were all about the employees because that's our job. Our job is services, that's what it is. And I would just hope that a government that worries so much about developers and how many construction jobs will be out there, that we would take the same strong approach with our employees. And yes, taxes can get raised, they raise, they go down, they come up, whatever. County's always been good when it came to taxes. Ask anybody out there, they'll tell you the school taxes kill them, their township or municipal taxes kill them, and the county's fine, given, we're a less bargain than there is in government. So, I'm going to vote for it, obviously, you agreed to it, but I would, I don't know, I just, I'm concerned the direction the county has taken. As I said, it's not directed at Mr. McClure, this has been going on for years, and I don't know why we ever got away from that. I sort of know why, because nobody wants to raise taxes, and they're afraid they will, these are legacy costs, but I don't know, I don't even know why we have steps anymore, to be honest with you. I think it's, it's almost like a sham. But that's my personal feelings based on my experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have questions? I have some questions. Either, Mr. McClure, do you want Ms. Cabaly to do it? Well, I guess just maybe an overview because this is obviously the end point.
Sure.
And I see, I mean, more than pay, I see other kinds of language.
Right.
Regarding, so can you speak a little bit to the negotiation, what were the sticking points and how you got to this? I see some provisions on healthcare, obviously, you're striking the language on civil service, which is overdue, and it's fine because that doesn't apply anymore.
Right.
But I'm just curious about some of this other.
Do you have specific questions? Because maybe Ms. Wandelowski will be the right person.
Okay, sure. We'll start with the, well, we'll start with what Mr. Hackman brought up. Why, I mean, I appreciate the idea of the COLA and the increase, why no provision for steps? Or was that even on the table?
It was on the table, steps were offered, they were rejected, and this was the ultimate conclusion of the, so, so steps were offered in year one and year two, and actually, the entire deal was with, when it had the steps in, it was probably worth more than 15%, but, you know, they determined at the end of the day that they wanted the 15% over three years, which is more than fair, and, you know, we're finding, we did a contract a year or two ago with the
with the residual unit. Steps were offered, and they rejected them because they wanted the COLAs. Because one of the things COLAs does is it moves the whole scale. So, for example, Mr. Hackman referenced, you know, the difficulty in recruiting and retention. Three years from now, the first step in human services will be 15% higher than it is today. So that is a, I think, remarkable way to get new people in the door if, in fact, money is the issue.
So then my second question is, it says the PPO and then HSA. So then the last line is, anybody hired after the 20th, January 1, 2025, only permitted to enroll in the HSA?
Correct.
Does that mean you're looking to drop that other?
The PPO will no longer, you know, for the next three years that, or two years, the, in this deal, would just be one year. That will be the case, correct?
But anyone who's-
There'll be no PPO.
But anybody who's in it.
Stick and stay in it, yes. Yep, they'll be grandfather.
And then there's a lot of language about after hours. I assume that's a stuck-
So that, no, that is, that's actually a codification of a practice that is ongoing and, in our view, is essentially a management, right? But we thought that it would be beneficial to the workforce if it was actually in the contract. But Ms. Wandelowski can explain that, I think, if you need more detail about it.
Again, just appreciate hearing the process because we don't hear it until it gets to this point.
Right, that's the process.
The term mandated, that's an interesting word. Regarding on-call, it says if employee is on person or sickly, the next person on list shall be mandated.
It's a term of art, and I think that Ms. Wandelowski needs to explain that.
Do you want me to finish my questions for you?
Sure, sure, sure.
Well, again, maybe the rest of it is all for her too.
Go ahead.
Idea of the disciplinary and the grievance procedure.
Yeah, you should, please direct those to her. I think she's, she's better-
Is there anything else you want to say to us about this process or how you feel that it went or?
I, I think it's fair to the taxpayers and it's fair to the employees. And, you know, three years from now, our starting rate's going to be 15% higher.
Okay, thank you.
So the language in the contract only applies for the after-hours. So that applies to-
Explain what after-hours.
Thank you.
I know what that is.
Fair. Not everybody does.
Having been there.
Any on-call work, right? So in children and youth and in aging, there's emergency situations that we have to respond to after hours, meaning after, you know, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, 8:30 to 4:30. So there already are on-call procedures for CYF and for aging protective services. And the way that system has always worked, as far back as folks have told me, and as long as we have been here, is that we ask for volunteers who are interested in working the on-call after-hours. And it's time and a half, right? So there's an incentive for, for union staff to do that. So thankfully, knock on wood, we've always been able to rely entirely on people who are interested in volunteering for that. So the language, as Mr. McClure said, was really to allow the union a voice in how a mandate would happen if, for example, there were no longer enough volunteers, right? So two years from now, if there's not enough volunteers and there's only two people who want to do all the protective services, then we would say, okay, if no one is interested in volunteering to earn time and a half but on a voluntary basis, then we would mandate people to take shifts for these after-hour phone calls and occasional response within the community. So again, in six and a half years, we've never had to do that, but we wanted to allow them a voice to talk about how that would happen, which ultimately is, is like we do most places, which is just reverse seniority. So if you're off probation and you have the technical skills to perform the job, then on a reverse seniority basis, we would take, you know, we would ask folks to do that. And if somebody was sick or had a vacation plan or, you know, fill in the blank, we would move to the sec, to the next person, and then the first person, Ms. would, would take the next one. So again, we have not had to do that, and hopefully we will not ever have to do it. But this way, the union had a, had a say in how that would happen should we need to. I forget what your other question was.
No, it's just the grievance procedure, obviously, striking the civil service language is obvious.
Sure.
I mean, was this a real stick point or was this pretty seamless and just, like you said, codifying it because everybody's already agreed to the practice?
Correct. I think the, I think the only change in the grievance procedure was a concession that management made as opposed to the union making a concession on that. So it was, I think it was a change in timeframe to, to respond to grievances.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone else? Thank you.
Sure.
Clarifying. If there's no other questions or discussion, call for the vote.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Hackman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Capora?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other new business to discuss? Any committee reports? Any liaison reports? I have one hot off the press, and Mr. Kraft can help me. Anybody who's interested, here's our updated bridge report from GPA who met yesterday. Fruits of our labor were here today with Mr. Hammer, but also we're at a point with the bridges, finally, that of the 25 P3 bridges, we have two left in construction with the hopeful and potential end dates of 9/24 and 10/24, but both under contract must be completed by this year end. So I believe it's Bridge 101 in Lower Nazareth Township on Hanover River Road, which is very near and dear to Mr. Kraft's heart, and 124 in Allen Township, which has been problematic because of some of the construction issues, which I guess the moving of utility lines and water lines, et cetera. And it looks like there's still a few punch list items open on two of the other bridges, 41 and 54. 41 has been an interesting process to make the residents happy, but I think we're finally at the end point, and the rest are under maintenance. So again, there's eight bridges that were taken out, so we are hopefully in December going to celebrate this.
What we're going to celebrate, and hopefully we get a schedule of what bridges are in what part of their maintenance agreement.
We asked for that, correct?
Yes, we did. I'm not sure whether we give them back to the county when we're done, whether we, you know, turn them back over to the county.
10 years before we give them back?
It's 10 years. When, do they give, do we, just asking Mr. McClure a question, do we give them back as they come off of maintenance? Is that how this whole thing was designed? Because we've never thought we were going to get to the end.
Well, we did. And one of the reasons we did is because, you know, we filed that lawsuit and saved us millions in the, in the process, and we're getting it finally done.
Right.
And really, great credit goes to council for helping us break through the logjam that we inherited, and now we're, we're on the precipice of getting it done. The answer to your question is, I'm not certain. I will check and get you a definitive answer.
Okay, because they're going to, as they were built-
What you say is logical, what you say is logical, but-
But to come here every three months to give another bridge back to the county, you know, would be kind of-
Was, was Benish at your general purpose authority meeting?
Yes.
Did you ask them for that?
We asked him to give us a report of when.
To give us a report because I said we're at the end of this or we're nearing the end. So could he articulate what the maintenance schedule's going to look like and who falls off?
That will be, that will be your best source of that information, and then you can report it back to the full council.
And these two bridges will be 10 years when they, in September or October. They'll start the 10 years, but some of them have been done for four years. When's the first one done?
Been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while. So yeah, so, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's all I have, but I just thought it was interesting. Any other liaison reports? Any clerks report?
None.
Solicitors report? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you. I have the time, it's 7:09.